Alright. Uh, hello everyone and welcome to the first episode of the study sessions series. And uh, I'm still a little under the weather, so I apologize for the the coughs and sniffles, but yeah, the the idea with this series um will be to study games from some of the truly elite Azul players. Um, so that would be the Saperlots and Queen Dong's of the world. Um, people who are able to consistently maintain um a rating above, you know, eight fifty or or nine hundred. So um, basically anyone probably in like the top five or so players. Um, and like I think phosphate has been pretty consistently. Yeah, I guess recently into nine hundred, but um, not a lot of big drops uh in phosphates rating. So um, yeah, looking for insights into what these players are doing that that I'm might not be doing. Um, and basically how this will work in practice is I will pick a game. Um, in this case, this is Saperlot against uh Queen Dong's. I don't want to call it a new account because it's actually an old account, but the one that she is currently using. Um, and I will basically go along with Saperlot's play and talk about what I would do in a given situation. Um, and then compare that to what Saperlot actually did. Um, and try to figure out why he did what he did. Um, and of course, this isn't going to be exclusive to Saperlot. I'll I'll pick games from other folks as well. Um, but that is the idea. And I think the lesson I learned from the first game review series or first game review video is that I can't talk about both sides of the game extensively without it being fifty-three minutes. So um, I will try to keep the commentary mostly to Saperlot's side. Um, that being said, there might be situations where there's something to talk about on on the other side of the game also. Um, and maybe for this study session, it's okay to to talk about both sides. I don't know. So we'll see how this goes. Um, I am going to assume that both players are tracking tiles. Um, and so I will do the same so that I have the same information that um that Saperlot had. Um, okay, so I guess another thing before I start just to highlight things that like I'm curious about. Um, definitely round one strategy is still something I'm very interested in. So um, you know, round one is when you have the highest number of plausible options as you build your board like and get into later rounds, you know, only certain plays really make sense. But in round one, and for example, in this round one, there are three groups of three tiles. So like you have so many options about how to approach this. Um, and you know, I think if you watched my um beginner to master series, you know, I like to build the second column, but I think I almost rely on that as like a crutch um and default to that too often. So I'm going to be really interested in round one strategies. Um, I'll be interested in like um first player tile. You know, my approach is I've never really stated this in the beginner to master series, but my approach has always kind of been that it's, you know, all other things equal. It's better to have it than to not have it. Um, so that you dictate play in the following round. Uh, but I think Saperlot has like a lower average number of turns with the first player tile than I do. Um, if you look at stats, so I'm curious about that. And then the main thing is that in the main thing, in my opinion, that differentiates these top players from good or great players is how they navigate bad luck, basically. Um, you know, we can all win games when the tiles go our way and everything falls into place, but it's the situations where things don't go your way. How do you navigate that? How do you turn that into still a winning position for you? So those are the some of some of the things that I'll be keeping an eye out for specifically. And let me get a sip of water and then we can jump in. Okay, so this draw um, obviously heavy on white and red, but there's also this three blue. Um, so I mean, like I said, there's a lot of possibilities here. Obviously, just going three blue in the center is a very strong play. And it leaves you open to uh, you know, grabbing three white for row four or like pivoting your column to the second column and grabbing three red on row five. Um, now the danger of going blue then red is that there's a lot of white in this round. And you do want um obviously eventually you're going to want three white. So um, whether that's really worth a concern, you know, it's not like you need five white. You only need three. So um, maybe it's okay, but other possibilities would be would be like row five white, maybe. Um, or row five red. I don't think it makes sense to play like row four white, um, because then your opponent just snatches up the blues. And you're stuck on, you're stuck there. So I think I would be looking at row three blue, row five red. Um, or row five white, maybe. The nice thing about taking row five red is that then you get either row three blue or row three white, and both are pretty good for you. I mean, it's kind of the same thing as taking row three blue and then you get row four white or row five red. So um, I think because you can get good bottom row development regardless, that row three blue might be the play. Um, so I'll say that that's what I would go for, though. The more I think about it, the more I can't stay away from my my second column tendencies and think that row five red might be the play. So um, let's see what Saperlot does. Yeah, so uh, row three blue. And we'll see what Queen Dong does. Okay, so I think especially given that Queen Dong went for row three yellow, I'm sorry, row three um white. Uh, I think it especially makes sense to attack row five red. Um, and build the second column, you'll have this big lead on red. Um, so that's what I, that's what I would do in this situation. But here we go. So Saperlot um opts instead to go for two white on row four. Um, ensuring that maybe he doesn't get completely blocked out of white. So like had he taken the red and then Queen Dong takes the white on row two, um, then he's gonna have a really hard time building white in the future. Um, there would be only two left in this round and there's already been seven. So um, I'm going to assume that's the logic. Um, just ensuring progress on his row four. Okay, so Queen Dong takes the two yellow for row two. Um, s- and I think that I think I would go three red on row two at this point. Um, so again, just blocking row five uh blocking row five red. And um, locking in your second uh, your second row. So then you can focus on, you know, trying to finish out row four white and make progress on row five black. Okay, so we do see that. Oh. Okay. Whoa, this is fascinating. So this is kind of a wild play in my opinion. Um, now Queen Dog does have the first player tile, so she'll get first crack at whites next round. Um, but it's interesting to compete on whites uh when there's already been thirteen in uh, I'm sorry, when there's already been seven in this round. So um, I mean, for Saperlot, there's you know, a couple of options. You could go black, uh, you know, row five black. But I would expect you know, row, I would expect him to continue taking the white here. Um, because we know there's not going to be a lot of white next round. So for example, like if there's only two white or three white, um, then him taking one will prevent Queen Dong from getting her row four. So I suspect he'll take the white. Um, Queen Dong will get the the two blacks. Um, and then Saperlot will get uh, his preference of of blue and black on the top row. But here we go. Uh, wrong again. So opting for progress on black. Um, and yeah, I mean, I don't know that there's like it's hard to have concrete takeaways. Um, especially in in round one. Um, obviously, like he's valuing progress on both row four and five than progress on just row four. So he's gonna end up with two whites and two blacks, whereas Queen Dong is gonna end up with just two whites. And had he taken the white, it would have been three whites and no blacks to one white and two blacks. So um, let's see. So he'll have four total tiles in the bottom two rows at the end of this. Um, and Queen Dong will have one. Had he taken the white, he would again have four total tiles. Uh, one um, sorry, he would have three total tiles. Just the three white and Queen Dong would have three total tiles. So maybe the logic is like he's getting a four uh, a four to two advantage instead of a three to three tie. Uh, just in terms of like total number of tiles in the bottom two rows. Okay, so I certainly expect the black here. Uh, and this is something that we've talked about a lot in the beginner to master series, like the this black tile is worth more than like the optimal row one placement. So maybe the red is slightly better than the blue for, you know, future adjacency, but um, getting this progress on row five is is more critical. Okay, so the rest of that round just plays out. Yeah, so I mean, this is exactly the the reason I thought that maybe he would want that one white. Um, because in this situation like this, which was relatively likely, uh, given how many whites there were last round. Um, you know, he'd be able to finish row four and and Queen Dong wouldn't. That being said, um, he's gonna leave this round most likely on even playing field where neither of them are gonna finish it. So and now he has an easier time getting to row five black. Um, okay. So let's see what Queen Dong does. Takes one white. So Saperlot basically has to decide whether or not to block this row four white. Um, some of the other consider considerations in this round are obviously making progress on black and scooping up some of this yellow action. Um, that being said, like I think he can probably wait on these yellows. Um, Queen Dong's more invested in blues, though it wouldn't surprise me. Like if Saperlot takes the white, I wouldn't be surprised to see Queen Dong go three yellow to take that away and then just plan on row two blue and and get row three blue in the future. So um, but but back to the plate hand. So I think you know, the options here are like three yellow, one white, or you know, two black, maybe. Um, but I think I don't think grabbing the white here is like forced, but I think it's what makes the most sense. So you prevent your opponent from getting row four, you make progress on yours. And nothing else is high enough priority in my opinion, because you know, there's so much flexibility on the upper, like Saperlot's more or less guaranteed to get row two yellow. Um, possibly even row three yellow. So I think white here makes the most sense. But Saperlot prioritizes the three yellow. So um, yeah, actually looking at this white situation again, there's something I didn't notice, which is that when Saperlot takes the three yellow, it creates a situation where if Queen Dong takes one white, Saperlot gets three black with the first player tile. So he's created a situation to maximize his scoring this round. Um, and probably get row five with the first player tile uh, in exchange for row four in a round where his opponent can't really keep up scoring wise. So because of this yellow situation, like he can score much better than Queen Dong can, because she can only get one of these two blue. Um, one of these two blue options, whereas he can get both. So uh, let's see what Queen Dong does. Doesn't even take the white. So you can see how the two arguably the two best players in the game um, think about row completion versus um like board building, I guess. Uh, so and this is something that that we talked about in the beginner to master series sometimes as well, like some of the opponents I ran into clearly felt very uncomfortable about leaving rows open uh, or incomplete. But here we see the best of the best. Um, opting to not defend their opponent from completing a row. And then the opponent is not even opting to complete the row uh because they value progress on this row five more highly. So um, let's see what Saperlot will do. I mean, I think like based on his decision making thus far. Um, you could almost guess that he would take the two black over the the two white, over the single white. Um, if he doesn't take the white, Queen Dong can be guaranteed to finish row five. So this is an interesting one. And again, I'm not talking about the upper rows too much because there's just so much play there. But maybe I should be thinking about that more. Um, but I think this round is kind of all about the bottom rows. I mean, my instinct is still to take the white. Um, but you know, I was wrong about that last time. So um, let's, let's see. Yeah, so ops for the blacks. Um, which is, you know, in a way, like I said, not surprising, given his uh, disinterest in preventing this on the last play. Um, let's see what Queen Dong does. So takes the white. Okay, so what can Saperlot do here? Um, I think at this point, like one priority is not giving row three blue. Um, obviously, getting row two yellow is a priority. Uh, but you could also just leave it open for now to potentially pick up blues on row two. Um, now, there's some like there's some row one complications here. Uh, at least in the sense that you're competing with yourself for row one black. And if you want row one yellow, you can't group these. Um, and then you're almost, I mean, I guess uh, you know, row one blues not great, but I mean, you could just take it now, maybe, and um, not have to worry about row one. So what would I do here? I think I would, I think I would probably lock in two yellow. Um, but the problem is like once the problem with taking two yellow is if Queen Dong, like, let's say, takes one black from this factory and and puts all the blues in the middle. Um, then you have to I mean, you don't have to defend row three blue and I think something we'll see in Saperlot games is that um, sometimes he just lets his opponent have have things because he knows his is better. But in this case, I don't know that it would be better. So um, hmm. Something I might consider is just row one black. Just take this black from the middle, play it on row one, allow this row five black to remain open if Queen Dong chooses to to do that, to take the other black. Uh, and then you collect either, you know, blue or yellow. Um, but probably blue, I guess, for the for row two. So I don't know. If I were in this situation, I might just take row, take black for a one. Um, tough call to be honest. Um, you can't pin the last pick on Queen Dong, so um, she's gonna have the opportunity to to pin it on you. Okay, let's see what he does. Okay, so immediately goes for the blue defense. And um, this is not a possibility or not an option that I talked about. Um, and what's interesting about it is so I think part of the reason this works is that Queen Dong only has two plays left. Um, so like she can't really make use of these groups of three. Um, she has to play has to play them on row two. She has to pick one on row two and then play something on row one. Uh, or at least that's what would make the most sense to me. Um, and if she wants to take two black, she has to take it on row one. So what Saperlot's done is like hurt her her row two slash row three by taking these blues. And basically made it so she can't make progress on row five anyway. Um, and yeah, we'll we'll overspend on row two. So this basically you know, this this play of hers should be um, row two red or row two black. The other interesting thing actually is if she takes row two red. Um, hmm, yeah, if she takes her two red and Saperlot takes the two black, then she has to take the three yellows for row one. Um, and overpay for those. So she's overpaying for two. She's overpaying for one. If she takes row two black and Saperlot takes one blue, then again, she's overpaying for one. So he's created a pretty like bad scenario for for Queen Dong. No matter what she does, she'll end up paying three on row one. Um, and if she wants to keep her adjacency on row two, then she's gonna overpay on on row two as well. Okay, so I would expect um, the row one blue to come out here. Um, as discussed, I don't think the extra negatives are worth the uh, row one yellow. Um, that being said, actually she's gonna ruin her upper row adjacency also and overpay also. And yeah, actually, you know what? Of course you you take the yellows, right? Because um, you're getting the last pick anyway. So if you play the blue, you're gonna get the, you know, the reds back as negatives. So of course you take the yellows. Um, sorry for missing that. Um, yeah, because you're taking the negatives regardless, you should you should take the most optimal one, which is which is clearly the yellows. Okay, so several it's up by three. Um, I don't know if this was a turn-based game or a live game, but um, yeah, that that situation that he put Queen Dong in last round by taking those two blues. That feels pretty hard to arrive at in a live game. That's um, that was pretty nice. Um, okay, so yep, this round only two blacks. Um, things look good for row four white. Obviously, Queen Dong can defend it. Um, but it's not ideal. And you know, I suspect like we're pretty much giving up on defending. You know, I suspect like we're pretty much giving up on defending row three blue from, from Queen Dong. Um, that's gonna be pretty tough. And the nice thing is we have. This group of three reds. Uh, for, for row three red that, um, obviously. Um, Queen Dong could take and if I'm looking at this board, maybe that's the first play I make is. Three red on row two. Um, that way. All your blue is freed up for O3, you don't have to worry about row two blue at all. And yeah, row two. Yellow for Saperlot, so uh, let's see what Queen Dong does. Okay, goes immediately for the. Defense of whites. So let's see what Saperlot does. I don't see a reason to rush into taking the one, taking one of the blacks. And maybe this is our first instance of. Seeing how much Saperlot values the first player tile. I would be. I think pretty happy to just take the two yellow from the middle here. I think because Queen Dong played this two white. You're not guaranteed to get the three red, but. You know, that was the, her best spot for it. She doesn't wanna play them on row three because she wants row three blue. Um, could go for them on row four, but. You know, it's not like a great play by any means, so. I don't feel like you need to rush into this and additionally taking it groups up the yellows that you want. Same thing with taking a black, like if you take a black, you give Queen Dong the opportunity to group up these yellows, so. Um, I think I'm just taking the two yellows on row two. Okay, let's see what. Miss Dong does, Queen Dong, okay, so just, yeah. Steady as she goes on the defensive whites. Yeah, it'd be interesting to think about this game from Queen's Dong perspective, this is like much more. Overtly defensive than, than I think I would play it, uh, so. Maybe we do another game where we do it from her side. Okay, so yeah, this kind of. Makes things interesting for Saperlot. One thing that. I think about in this situation is when you and your opponent are competing for the same color, so in this case, black. And. You don't need. The black in any other row. I almost invite my opponent to group these two blacks together. So that I can finish out my row and prevent them from getting one on their row. So. Now, the other black need for Saperlot would be row one, but you know, hopefully can get. Blue, um, worst case scenario, even a white, so. All that to say, like, I'm not jumping at one black here, I don't think. You know, now might be the, the time to take the three reds. It's also actually. Maybe the play is one blue and you create, you know, at least some. Tension around. This row three blue for. For Queen Dong. So by taking one blue. At the very worst, she has to pay an extra. To get it because there's only these two groups of two left, so these two groups of two need to get grouped in the middle and then she has to take it. And you open up the possibility of just taking one of them in the future and preventing this. So I actually think I like row one blue in this scenario. Okay, goes for the row three red. That was, uh. The other top contender. See what Queen Dong does. Grabs a black. Okay. So let's see. I think the obvious first play to look at is just row five black. Now. That opens you up to potentially taking some pretty big negatives. And. Yeah, so just to illustrate it or the best I can on the Azul replay. Is if you take one black. There's just yellow, blue and red left. So if Miss Dong took one white. There would only be those colors left. And then. I mean, honestly, like you're looking at taking. Row one blue. For an additional four negatives. Miss Dong takes. Maybe the red, maybe three yellow. But. Um, you're looking at at least minus eleven, if not minus fourteen. If you take the black right now. So the other option would maybe be take the blue. Uh, and if Miss Dong takes the black. Then. You can do the same thing where you take the one white for your row four. And then she has to take all five blues. For row three, or she plays one row four, you take the red and then she takes the three yellows, so. Um, I think that's better, so. I would. Oh, it's actually four blues, not five blues, I'm sorry, since we're taking one, so I think I would take the one blue for row one. And. If she takes one black, then you grab a white. And we go from there. So he takes the black and we'll see what Queen Dong chooses to do here, so the line that I laid out was taking one white to group all this crap up. Probably more likely is just that she takes the three blue. So I didn't really consider that line. I always, I'm always hesitant about the negatives that I'm gonna take. And sometimes that prevents me from seeing like, actually, it makes more sense for the other player to just do this other thing. So if she goes three blue. Then the line I calculated before doesn't, doesn't matter. Okay. So. Yeah, in this situation. I think I'm going. Either two blue on row one. Or one white on row one. Probably lean towards the blue. There are seven, actually, let's, let's see, so there's seven whites left. And Saperlot needs one, two, three, four, five. Has the first player tile though, so, but yeah, maybe, maybe one white on row one. Just to put a dent in. This five white that you need knocking it down to four. Um, because if you take the blue, you know, Miss Dong can just take, Queen Dong can just take the white. And then, you know, opt to play those yellows at the end, so I think I'd go one white on row one. Okay. Super interesting. So Saperlot's basically gonna give up his row one here. I think it's a near certainty that Queen Dong takes these two blue. And. This does force her to take. Some extra negatives, I suppose, like. It's different to take the one red and then play the three yellows, now she has to take the two blue. And either play them and then discard three yellows or discard, you know, basically take an extra negative. Uh, and then play the three yellows, so. See what she does, throws them away. And I assume she'll play these three. So that was really interesting, basically. Opting to prioritize. Row four. Over eight, opting to get one more tile on row four than to get this row one tile. And. Maybe this would be a good time to do. A little bit of calculation math. Which is. Something that I mostly avoided in the beginner to master series. I think the goal of that series was to. Try to like build intuition on, you know, what good plays are. And show that you don't need to be constantly calculating. But. Let's talk about what the actual impact of. Not taking this row on white was, so. In this round, I'm sorry, in the last round. It was worth one additional point. So let's say, uh. Take white is one, um, leave white. Is zero. And then. In the. So that was around three, now we're in round four. So in round four. Let's say you play. One, you play row one black. Um, if you have the white, this black is worth four. If you don't have the white, the black is worth three. So. Now we fast forward into round five. And you play the blue. Uh, so this blue is worth five and you get the two point bonus. And so. Your total. Is twelve. So taking that white on row one. Uh, gets you twelve points, leaving the white. You get zero three, uh, and then you play the blue and you get four. So it's basically a five point difference. Now. We have the. Uh, gift of foresight in this case, which is that there's only two whites this round, and so this white ended up being really valuable. But so the calculation that Saperlot must have done is like, are those five points worth? Potentially getting. Stuck on row four. Or the other thing to consider. Is. Maybe Saperlot was thinking, I might not get to. Play both of these whites anyway. Like maybe, you know, there's. At the time, there were seven left. He would need one, two, three, four. So getting four of seven, eh, when Queen Dong's still blocked on row five, I mean, seems pretty reasonable, so maybe not a concern, but. Um, yeah, so just for reference, like. We. Generally in the Azul community, talk a lot about prioritizing rows one and two. I think that's a pretty well-understood strategy. But it is worth understanding like what it, what it actually means to give up. Let's say this, this white tile. And. It can be less than you think. So five points, I think is like. Kind of right in the middle of. At least intuitively to me, like the, is it worth it? Like, if you told me it was three points. Then. You know, I'm like, okay, I'd probably. Give that up, but five feels like right on the edge where. Having that. Having that tile in row one is, is pretty strong, so. I think given this draw, which we haven't talked about yet, uh, it's most likely going to. Work out nicely that he opted for this play because he'll guarantee his row four. But. I think the expected number of whites in this round probably would have been three. And you wouldn't, ah, even if it's three, like, it's a little tricky, so. Um, yeah, maybe it's just the fact that like. Knowing that there's probably only gonna be three whites. And you need two of them. Better to instead make it that you only need one of them. Okay, so enough to talk about that, let's keep going. I think. You know, the priorities here are fairly clear, obviously getting one of the whites is a priority. Queen Dong's in a little bit of trouble. Just in that. Well, in trouble is a. Strong word, but like wants to fill out these yellows, of course. Uh, but black is like a higher priority. Than those yellows. But she can't just like let Saperlot take all the black. But. Yeah, has options for. Blue and red on row two, maybe red row three. So. If I'm Saperlot, I'm seeing that I'm not gonna get row two white because I have to spend one on. Row four. Uh, I'm seeing that my opponent wants row five black. And that I want row two black, so I'd be taking three black on row two. Okay, which we see played. Queen Dong grabs the yellow. Okay, so. Again, I'm kind of thinking. I'm not in a rush to grab one of these whites. Um, and I wanna keep hunting down blacks. So I'm looking at taking the black, uh, from this factory and. Uh, the reason to grab from this factory is to put these two blue in the middle. So that you can potentially group them. Into a group of three, uh, to hurt Queen Dong's row two, because ideally. Right, if you think about this from Queen Dong's perspective. Ideally, she gets row three red and row two blue. She'd rather not. Well, there's only three, only three red left, so maybe grabbing row two red's not bad right now. But that would be a better point, pointing, um, scenario. Uh, to be able to get this row three, which helps her row four, right? So she actually like. This is actually quite a nice play for her. It's three points and then it turns this into four points instead of one, so. So she wants her two blue. Row three red. Um, and of course the blacks, so. I don't know that it makes sense for Saperlot to, let's say, play like row five blue. To, to block this, but I think the blacks are, defending black is a higher priority, so. I would go with, uh, one black from, from this factory. Cool. Let's see what Queen Dong does. Okay, so forget everything I said about row three red. Uh, granted, row three red's still a possibility for her, so we haven't written that off. And maybe, you know, given that there were only three red remaining, this is a better play than blue. Um, so you know, that makes some sense. So. Let's see what Saperlot wants to do here. There's not. Much to like defend really. Well. There's still blacks. And. I think the question is. Okay, so I think what I would do is, is just take one black. And throw it away now. Prevent them from being able to get grouped up. You can get the two whites if they get grouped up, they're, you know, overpaying, but. Um. Yeah, it just leaves you. A little more flexible. I think to take the black and throw it away now, the other option is to take the white and play it. Assume Miss uh, Queen Dong will, will do something to group the blacks up. To force you to dump both of them. Um. Which, like I said in the last round, sometimes like dumping both of them is better than dumping one. Uh, there's four left. She would need three if she doesn't get one this round. So, um. Maybe, yeah, maybe you do take the white, see if she groups them and, and dump them both if so. Um. And you can't get really hurt by negatives, so you don't have to worry about that too much. Cause you can play these blues on row five. Or reds on row five, so you're not really in danger, so you can just play this. White or black situation, um. And you're definitely taking from the middle, you don't wanna group things, um. So. I think maybe I'm going white and then seeing if I can take both blacks actually. Um, instead of taking a black and then Miss Dong, Queen Dong takes a black and then you have to take both whites. So I think I'm going white from the center on row four here. Okay, and yeah, so Miss Dong locks in row one yellow, so she doesn't have to worry about. Missing that and leaves these black, this black as an opportunity. Um. Okay, so. I think just taking one black from the center. And discarding it. Um. I'm not really seeing anything else here, you're gonna end up with these blues like pretty much no matter what. The only way, so actually, th- th- this is an interesting one to think about, I shouldn't. Discount this possibility, if you take one white. Um, you do give. Queen Dong these blacks, but it comes at the expense of these four white, I'm sorry, these four blue. So. You, you go minus one. Um, she gets the, the blacks, you can take. Let's say one white, maybe you throw that away, um, there's only five white left and you need them for. Your upper rows, though you don't really need one on row one, cause you can play blue. Um. So you could go that route, you could take the white, give her the blacks. But know that she's gonna end up at least minus eleven. Um. I think those would be the only negatives. So you take white, she takes blacks. You play the reds. Uh, and then she discards the blues. So. The question is, is this extra like minus nine? Worth letting her have the blacks this round, um. And I don't have a good intuition for that. My, if this were a real time game, I think I would have just taken one black. By now, analyzing this as if it's a turn based game, I think this white play is like at least worth thinking about. Um, because the other thing that happens is if you take a black, if you take one black, then she takes one black. And now you have to think about what to do with these reds. Um, you can play them, um. But if you play them, you're going minus four on the blues. Uh, not minus four, but minus six, four negatives, or minus seven, four negatives. So if you take the black and she takes the black. You're kind of have to take the white. And then she gets this red play. For some points, whereas if you take the white, you give the black up, but. Um, you get to play the red, so you don't give up those points and she goes a bunch of negatives, so. Maybe I'm talking myself into this white play. The only thing is like. So I guess this is the other thing worth saying. Because she has the first player tile. She's guaranteed to be able to finish this row five next round. What she's not guaranteed is to be able to finish this row five and get row one. But actually, if you take one black, she gets one black still, so then it's only one and one, so she's almost guaranteed. Only if the blacks came out as three and one or four, would she be able to not finish it? Any combination of ones, oh, or two and two, actually, two and two or works as well. But pretty unlikely, so. Um. Yeah, I'm talking myself into this white play where you take the white, give the blacks up, but dump minus eleven. And you're just gonna be up a ton of points headed into the last round, and I think it's gonna be almost impossible to lose. So instead of defending black, take the white. Let's see what happens, oh, hilarious, I didn't even have to think about all of that. Uh, okay, so a note to myself to make sure they confirm the play. Um. Well, now I'm definitely taking the black. I don't think that's a question. You take the black, she takes the yellows. Uh, you take the white, she takes the reds, you take the blues. Whoa, okay, so it was a question all along, so I think this actually though, um. This is in a way, the same situation I talked about, what Saperlot did right there. Is take away the possibility of row three red, which we talked about is not only three points, but then four points. So that's seven points instead of one and. Queen Dong is almost certainly gonna take black or yellow here for row one or row five. At which point Saperlot will be able to manipulate these four blues, so in the end it is about. Dumping the four blues on her, just like in the last situation and preventing this three red. Um. So obviously it played out differently, but it's the same, um. Wow, okay, so. Queen, so this is all just like. End of round manipulation of who, of negatives, right, so. Queen Dong is basically looking forward and saying, well, you're not gonna dump four blues on me. I don't know that this is gonna. Prevent that in the end, um. But yeah, if I'm Saperlot now, I am taking the black finally. Um, and choosing to play it. Didn't talk about that part of it. Um, but yeah, so in this situation. This makes a ton of sense, right? Because. There are five whites and you want two, maybe three. Of them, but even just getting two means you need all three whites, other whites on row three to lock this in. So if you assume that's not gonna happen. Um, then, you know, why not play this black? It's the only other thing you can do on row three. Now. The reason to think that it would be possible uh, is because Queen Dong can't play whites anywhere and would have to very intentionally deliberately defend this, so. Um, but it makes sense to play it and leave your whites flexible for. You know, rows one and two. Okay, so. I don't think there's any reason to play. Red or blue. Um, or to like defend this red, I think. The goal of defending this red was to prevent it from happening this round, um. Having. Queen Dong be blocked on two rows heading into round five, I, I don't think is a bad thing, so I don't, I'm not. I wouldn't be too worried about her like taking and playing these two reds, like yellow and black are much better row three plays, so. Uh, I wouldn't defend the reds, I think I would just take the white um, for the lowest number of negatives. Okay, so Queen Dong did prevent. Some negatives there, the scenario we talked about had her in, in the minus eleven range. But you can see like. How much they jockeyed for. That end of round position and control of the negatives. Um. Which was something I talked a lot about, or maybe not, hopefully I talked enough about it, um. But one of the absolute most critical. Azul skills, and we saw it play out there um, from the two best players, so. Um, okay, and then. Saperlot's up by fifteen, I mean, there's almost no. Possibility of, of losing, um. And I think we just got a hint that this was a live game, it looked like. That was the your opponent is out of time, do you wanna punish them button? So. Um, that play earlier that I said would be very hard to find in a live game, looks like that's exactly what Saperlot did. Uh, okay, so in this scenario. Um. I think you're gonna take whites on row two and. The. Thing to the um, decision point is. Do you take from the center and take one negative with first player tile, or do you take from the edge? And uh, take from the factory and take one negative with the extra tile. Um, and in my opinion, what you should do is take from the factory because. Now for Queen Dong to get her blues. On row two, she has to take a negative, so. You're gonna take a negative regardless, whether it's the first player negative or this extra white tile negative. So might as well force your opponent to take a negative by um, taking from the factory. So I would be looking at uh, three white on rogue two and ending the game here. And of course I'm wrong. So. If I'm honest, I don't. Understand the logic there, maybe Saperlot doesn't want to group the blues and, and wants to force Queen Dong to. And wants to potentially try to defend it, so I guess that's the logic, like. You can potentially try to defend this by just not grouping them. Now. With that thought in mind, like, I think. He's gotta take a blue here for row one. Um, I would take from a factory. So the reason to take from a factory is to put blacks in the middle so that. You know, Queen Dong is forced to take a black or, or risk all three of them getting grouped. So. Uh, does it matter which factory? I don't think it matters much in this case, so I'd be taking one blue from either the top factory or this bottom right factory. Okay. So. Uh, that makes sense also because. Your. Um. You still have row one blue available from either of these two factories and now you've secured your. Row three points, it's a little bit surprising based on. This row two play, so. My thought was like. If you're gonna just give. Ah, maybe the thing is, okay, so. Queen Dong can't really take the two blue here because then Saperlot takes one black. Um. And Queen Dong's left with no row one. Versus, oh no, she's just screwed anyway, like there's no way around it, so she's not gonna be able to complete one of these row two or row one. Now, the question is, did Saperlot have to take these two black to do that? Maybe, maybe, I wish I could go back a play, but if I try to, it will blow up the whole replay viewer, so I'm not gonna do that. Um, so let's see what Queen Dong decides. Okay, so now Saperlot can take this one black. Um, sets up a situation for him to get four yellow, which is great. He still has row one. Blue or white available, might have to overpay slightly for it, but like he's very much winning, so. I would be taking one black here and just throwing it away. Yeah. And then this is. Two blue and ultimately the row four yellow as well. Okay, so lots of really interesting stuff, Saperlot gave up a row one play to progress row four. We saw that whole end of round four shuffle. Um. And. Yeah, he won by fifteen, um. I think it's fair to say that like having the first, the first pick overall in this. Game was probably quite strong. Um, given that round one tile draw, but. Even in round one, he made a play I didn't expect, so he went. Three blue into two white. Um, and didn't look at the row, the three red at all. I was a bit surprised to see that. Queen Dong started with three white and then ignored the row five red. Um, or the three red on row five, that would have felt like a very. Strong play to me, um. But I am not going to. Question the play of uh. Either of the two best players in the world, so um. Yeah, there must have been a reason she didn't wanna build that second column. Um. But anyway, thanks for watching, um, only an hour. And six minutes to analyze this game, so. Um, I'm gonna have to figure out how to do these more quickly if I wanna be able to do more than one per episode, but um. Let me know what you think of the format, let me know if you think the length of it was too long. Um, and yeah, let me know what you think of the plays, I think there were some. Super interesting ones, I think it's clear that I would have played this very differently from Saperlot, um. The only time we agreed on plays is when they were like fairly obvious, I think, uh, maybe I'm not giving myself enough credit, but. Yeah, tons of interesting stuff, so um, thanks for watching and see you next time.